Good evening, everyone. It is 7:05 and I hereby call to order the November 2022 meeting of the Village Tidley Board of Trustees. Would you please join me in rise for the pledge of allegiance of the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We'll begin with a village court's report. Clerk Verona, please.
Yes, in the past month, there were 359 trash tags that were sold to payrolls processed by Treasurer Day. Lower Gale, the deputy clerk, continues to assist in the office as well as coordinating with planning and zoning boards and attending their meetings. The clerk's office will be closed next week, Thursday and Friday, November 24th and 25th, to observe Thanksgiving. Just a couple of other little tidbits. Last Friday, Veterans' Day, a really lovely ceremony with the veterans and at the Legion post. And it's just always a pleasure to be with them and to honor them. It was really a nice afternoon. And then along the lines of, you know, other organizations, the library and with the fire department for Halloween, they really put on a splendid event, like this whole dance party. It was wonderful and I had a blast with the kids and we had put together bags with candy and vouchers for pizza and it was a whole lot of fun. And that same evening, the fundraiser for the fire department at Troth Haven went well. It was quite pleasant. And a reminder that even in this building, but also with the firehouse up through probably the second week of December, I know the library is and the fire department, we're partnering with Toys for Tots so you can drop off unwrapped toys. And there will be a representative from Toys for Tots coming to the fire department probably at the end of the second week of December.
Great.
So we're accepting toys and if you can see your way, then we can just make a child smile.
Wonderful. Thank you, Clerk Verona. Trustees, in your binders and sent earlier today, we have October 19th regular meeting minutes, November 3rd special meeting minutes, and November 9th workshop minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve all three sets of minutes, please. That's Baldino's or second?
Second.
Azraidi, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to the treasurer's report. Good night, Treasurer Day, as always. Good evening, Jim. Do you mind signing on the back table there? Thank you. Treasurer's report. In the general fund this month, $59,414.62. Capital fund, $8,481.35 for a grand total of $67,895.97. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
No.
That was made by Azraidi and seconded by Mangeri. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay the bills, please? Second?
Second.
All right, Mangeri followed by Baldino. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to a zoning report. Trustee Azraidi, please.
Yes, Gary Beck, our zoning enforcement officer, has reviewed nine building permits and issued eight. He's addressed, he's received one complaint and investigated it. He's addressed one zoning property and maintenance violation and undertaken two municipal searches and two 10 inspections. So he's pretty busy.
Still busy, yes. Thank you, trustee Azraidi. We have some members of the public with us this evening. It's always great to have. We have a number of items on the agenda and at this time, if you have public comment or questions on any of those, we're happy to hear from you before we move through and vote on those agenda items.
Yes, I'm here in support of authorizing Phase Two stormwater hydrologic and hydraulic study. So hopefully you vote to do that.
We are certainly planning on it, I think, but we really appreciate you being here and saying so. We've all gotten to practice mastering those terms, which is fun. But yeah, I know that you are in touch with a lot of your neighbors in the area and you're somewhat of a representative, so you know, you and I have been talking for many months on this and the board is very committed to moving forward with, you know, these flooding and drainage problems. Thank you very much, so we really appreciate getting that push from the citizenry is what makes us do the job, so pushing a thank you and support is always good. Appreciate it. Other comments from the public before we get back in here? Remember, you always get, lastly, I said a village board meeting, so if we don't pay it now, you can say it at the end. Okay, moving forward, first item is our resolution authorizing Phase Two stormwater hydrologic and hydraulic study. Again, we'll be working with Ty and Bond, who is an engineering firm we've had a relationship with now since, I believe, 2015, a number of things, well known to us and we're pleased with the job they do. So the details of this, you'll recall, we did a Phase One, which was a survey of the existing stormwater infrastructure, catch basins, drainage pipes, swales, et cetera, throughout the village, and as well as a community survey where residents could tell us what they've been observing, so we got a real sense of like what's actually going on in this village relating to stormwater. So Phase Two is to do hydrologic and hydraulic, which is how much water is there before it gets into the catch basin and where's it coming from and what's the volume? And then how much water is moving through your system after the catch basin and, you know, are your pipes big enough? Do the streets that require pipes have pipes, have catch basins, that sort of stuff. So it's before the drain and in the drain. We are looking at two specific areas in this Phase Two. We're looking at an area that includes sort of north Montgomery Street and Faroe Avenue, that zone there, and as well as the entire Tidley Acres development. So the Montgomery-Faroe area, the proposal from Ty and Bond was that that would be a price of $6,500 and the Tidley Acres $10,500. So we have in this resolution a total of $17,000 for Phase Two. I don't know at this time what sort of the schedule is, but I'm eager to find that out. I don't know, getting up against winter and all this water, we're trying to keep track of it, it's frozen, we should maybe wait till it's flowing again, but we will find out and let the public know right away.
And Mr. Mayor, did they send you an updated study or are we looking at early in the proposal or are we looking at the October 25th one? You heard a saying, a little correction, but just to clarify.
Clarifying which detail?
Well, so just that they referred to those fees based on Task 1, 2, and 3, but they really meant Section 1, 2, and 3, because there were different tasks numbers. So they're doing all of those tasks for those two areas, right?
We can make sure that we've got the correct proposal with the...
We can refer to the October 25th proposal, that's what the understanding is.
Okay. With that discussion, is there a motion to authorize the Phase Two stormwater study? And second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangeri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye and stormwater Phase Two can get underway. All right. Thanks, Jim. Next, we have a resolution authorizing execution of a fire protection district, a fire service amendment, oh, excuse me, agreement between the town of Red Hook and the village of Tidley for '23 and '24. I don't know how many years we've been doing this with the town, but certainly a long before I got on the board.
Probably before you got on the board?
Yes.
Two-year contracts will buy the town of Red Hook contracts with the village of Tidley to have fire protection services from our amazing fire department.
Yeah.
So we got this, the fire chief is aware of the numbers and terms of this contract and I know that we're going to go and speak with the town in the new year to give them our latest numbers of how many calls we're getting to and what our costs are, et cetera. But...
And it's worth saying that there are two companies that serve the town. One is an independent fire company located in Red Hook, who does, whose revenues are and spending is supervised in a different way than Tidley's.
Actually, that's not true. People think it is, but it's not. They are technically supervised by the village of Red Hook. They just happen to own their firehouse and they own their fire trucks.
Okay.
So that's the distinction.
Okay. In the case of Tidley, the village owns the firehouse and they own their equipment.
Right, right.
So the village of Tidley has a closer relationship with the village. And over time, this little fire company in Tidley has, under good leadership, has grown and it's actually meeting more calls in the town of Red Hook than in the past. So that, those are the kinds of issues that we want to discuss, that there's proper sharing of total town revenues that are coming through.
There's technically disagreement draws a line north of, north of Kruger Island and north of, I want to say, Rillbeck around here?
It'll be about right there.
Bus Cars Road, I think, is the dividing line. That's the area that Tidley agrees to cover and the other department agrees to cover all the rest of the town. So, you know, that's, that's just a contract.
Yeah.
And the town contract reflects appropriate increases in the Lozapp contribution?
Yes.
Compared to previous contracts and basically it's about a 2% increase each year. It's a sort of possible increase. Is part of the contract that their fire department comes to our parades, ours to theirs?
I don't know if that's explicit in the contract.
It's not, it's...
No, it isn't.
We'll remember that for the next negotiation. With that discussion, is there a motion to authorize the execution of the 2023-2024 fire contract?
No move.
And second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Trustee Baldino?
Aye.
Trustee Azraidi?
Aye.
Trustee Mangeri?
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Thank you very much. Now we have some resolutions relating to village elections next March. So the first is a resolution establishing election day for Tuesday, March 21st. Elections to be held at Tidley Firehouse between noon and 9:00. And I guess this year it's not going to be on St. Patrick's Day, but it has been in the past.
What election is that?
It's the village election.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Yeah.
These guys. Oh, wow.
Yeah. We're on our own cycle. November thing is for other politics.
Can we just like vote?
I just want to remind the public that we're going to have a public comment as before and after. It's nice to have you here, but just keep, I'll get distracted because it's fun. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing election day? So that was Azraidi seconded by Mangeri. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next we have a resolution appointing election inspectors. According to the election law, the village board must appoint at least two election inspectors and one alternate. The election inspectors will be qualified village residents and the board appoints Mark Savino and Stacy Riley as election inspectors. The inspectors are compensated for their work. They are paid a sum of $10 per hour. Per hour, right? One alternate is needed and once again, just like that will be Jackie Zatko. That's our inspector resolution. Is there a motion to appoint those election inspectors? That was Baldino, second?
Second.
Mangeri, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next, we have the return of the tax roll to Dutchess County. So these are the delinquent taxpayers for the last tax year. We have a list and the village hands this off to the county who can take it from here, so to speak, collecting these taxes. Is there a motion to submit the return of the tax roll to Dutchess County?
No move.
Azraidi? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lastly, I just want to explain these a little bit before we vote on them. We are going to have a special meeting on December 8th at 7:00 PM. Robin, we set those during the workshop, so I'm calling out the time and date. This is for a grant application under the Community Development Block Grant Program. Tidley has a good track record winning these, but every so many years, they make us think you're off. We are, our thought is to apply for, there are several categories that you can apply for, and we think we've identified one that could get more money for the firehouse expansion, so that's our intention. But the, we're also going to be setting a public hearing because part of this grant program is that if any member of the public has other ideas, we're obligated to hear about them. So you can look up the Community Development Block Grant and the different categories. There are things like resiliency of facilities, so that's sort of what we're going for. We've gotten a lot on public infrastructure and handicap accessibility, ADA, so some of the CDPGs we've won related to the park improvements or sidewalks. Pine Street, Phase 1 and 2, we've done under that, you know, sort of category, so. So that's what the special meeting and public hearing are for. With that, is there a motion to set a special meeting of the village board for 7:00 PM on December 8th? Me and Mangeri followed by Baldino, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And a resolution setting a public hearing for the 2023 CDVG application, also for December 8th, 7:00 PM.
No move.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Our next court meeting will be held right here at the historic West DePasse, the DePasse Hall. I guess we learned in the place to paster.
The paste.
All right? I gotta start draining myself.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. Have a great night. December 21st, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM, and I want to remind the board and let the public know that I will not be present for that and that Deputy Mayor and the Chair and I will be out of state at my father's 80th birthday party with my whole family. Missed the December meeting. And we also will have a workshop on December 14th at 7:00 PM. And get through our committee reports. Trustee Azraidi?
Yes, just a note, thank you to the citizens of Tidley who brought in coats for the annual coat drive for the Rotary. I was present this weekend at the community hall in the community center in Red Hook, where they were not only distributing those coats to those who needed them, but also turkeys and chickens and marvelous collection of fruit vegetables and apples and berries and so forth. It's really a lot of fun. It was oversubscribed by volunteers and so the effort went quickly. And they're not just giving away food, they're giving away really good food. And Jennifer donated 80 turkeys and some chickens, so it's a good thing.
Thank you, trustee Azraidi. Trustee Baldino of the court, report.
So this month, we had a total of $90 in fines, zero in surcharges, zero in civil fees, a total of $90.
Thank you. There've been a lot of tickets flowing into the court that have not come out on the other side yet, so I expect this, yeah. And we have charges received 43 and disposed 2, which means there's still 41 to get through in the upcoming responsive court, which segues into the monthly police report totals. Trustee Mangeri, please.
Yes, so in the month of October, there was 29, excuse me, 29 incidences. And they issued 39 Uniform Traffic Tickets, 8 Parking Tickets, and there were 3 arrests.
Thank you very much.
I wonder if just parking tickets or backwards parking.
Oh, yes. Absolutely. I saw a backwards car yesterday, but here's one on the court report, parking against traffic. The Deputy Mayor is not here tonight, but if she were, she would be proing about Winterfest, which is coming up on Saturday, December 3rd. Tidley Fire Department has Santa confirmed to ride around in the 57 Maxim and I get to ride on air with those wonderful gentlemen. We'll probably be going around at 2:00 in the afternoon and we go out this way and go through the development around St. Stack, down north, usually Pine, along Broadway, Montgomery, Good Lane, my favorite part, 9G, and then we come back on in. So then after that, around probably 3:34, there's going to be a formal email sent out this weekend and we have our publicity ready. There will be gathering at the firehouse, we have our little fire barrel and there's usually some refreshments. The library will be doing some crafts for children of all ages and Santa might hang around that a little bit sometimes he's there. And then with help from the Tidley Fire Department, we'll be having our countdown to the lighting of the tree, which this year, once again, is going to be one of the fire trucks because the tree was getting to be about 40 feet high and it was beyond the ability of our, the UVW did it to decorate every year. But that's thematically appropriate since we're working so hard on this firehouse expansion. So, and after that, once the things are lit, we certainly encourage everyone to stay in the village and support the businesses. I know that the Tidley Merchants and Artists Association and a lot of the businesses are considering, you know, certain kinds of specials or how to synergize with the village events. They and the village will be decorating around the village. And I'm glad I didn't forget, the best part of Winterfest is the giant pressure on horses and the wagon. So we're getting the horses' wagon again this year. That'll be doing loops around the village, I believe it's between 5 and 7. So always really, really fun and it's great to be able to get them because they are booked solid at this time of year. So Winterfest on the 3rd, look for more information in a formal aspect this weekend. And with that, is there anything else that the public would like to discuss? Yes?
Would you like Panda to cover the June, not June, I wish, the December 8th meeting? You want to think about it and let me know?
Yeah, let me think about it, because I know...
I'm just going away, the 29th, so I want to know before that.
But I have, you know, we used it for the SDRs, which we really needed. That was great.
Okay.
I'm thinking there's going to be some stuff coming up when we'll use up our allocation of extra filmings.
Sounds good.
Thank you very much. Other things from the board?
Yes, is the community block grant state one?
Great question. So it's federal money that gets given to states, no, excuse me, gets given to counties.
Is administered by the county.
And then the county doles it out to various municipalities and there, it's every year, the awards are usually around 100 or 150,000, which for some communities isn't going to do much. For Tidley, it's like a perfect size grant. And, you know, we compete with all our friends, our other municipalities in the county every year for these, but Tidley averages maybe four in a five-year period.
So that mostly you have one in a year?
Yeah, yeah.
So you gotta decide what to go for.
Exactly.
So you could do both the firehouse and like the lead and the ground mitigation and so on.
Right, but also like that, for example, is not one of the categories that they'll fund. So, you know, the, it's always frustrating because, you know, we just need to pay all our streets, right? For example. Nobody will offer you a grant for that. You know, we were able to do so much on Pine Street because of how we were able to say this is about access and, you know, we've got our little bus stop over here and we've got our park facilities here at the public facilities, we've got a handicap swing, you know, we need sidewalks over here.
Yeah, they're...
And so that's how you sort of, you know, and we also did our drainage swale. So you kind of have to make your project fit what their funding categories are.
For two or three years, they were talking about walkability.
So you made it seem like a capital project instead of an operational thing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it does. They're supposed to improve the infrastructure.
What is the actual application of that?
December 9th?
Soon. Right, so you have it prepared already and so this meeting is to approve it?
We don't have it...
You don't have it prepared? Oh, okay. All right. So at this meeting on December 8th, you're going to discuss it and you're, whoever shows up slash to each other, you're pitching the idea of the firehouse as that application. So does it ever happen that anybody shows up with an idea that is better really than the...
A lot of people have suggested things and hasn't ever changed like what we were sort of hanging for, but, you know, in the past, we've, like we've, some of our other CDPGs were like the park improvements, we did a whole bunch of stuff, over there repaving the pavilion and...
Sidewalks.
You know, a lot of sidewalks over the years.
We did, we do some other water fund. We do some...
I don't think that was a CDPG. Yeah, I don't think so. So, you know, if we hear something that is like absolutely amazing, I'm sure we're going to consider it, but, you know, we'll see. You know, we, one of the reasons this is happening so late is we weren't, like, we're trying to get this firehouse expanded and look for every pot of money and we weren't sure for a while if we thought there was something under CDPG that we could make fit. But now we started to think that we can because we found that category, you know, facilities, critical facilities, resiliency, which I think is more about, you know, climate crisis and, you know, if there's something terrible going on here in the village and we're all out of power for days and, you know, that being a Red Cross emergency shelter with power, with showers that could actually, so that's, that's how we were like, that's a critical facility.
Right.
And needs to be resilient.
Yes.
So that's sort of our concept that we're trying to make it.
And how far are you from the goal?
How far are we?
How far are you from the goal, the total goal for the fires?
I'd say we're over halfway. Yeah, yeah.
Could you briefly describe what you want to do? This is the time.
Sure. What I want to do?
To expand the fire...
I want to move to France.
Put on stilts.
If you look over at the building, you'll see a picture of the new firehouse, of the firehouse expansion. And basically it's additional base for trucks as well as community facilities, including a place, a warming station or a place where people could go if the AC can't come on. So explicitly has space, which we don't have currently to take care of for people in that kind of emergency.
Yeah, and as, you know, part of that expansion, there are new, you know, gutters, there's like more roof, there's some storm drain work. That area behind starts getting into sort of wetland back there. So how to basically manage the water such that this building doesn't like flood or have water problems, you know, this would be a way that any part of the project related to handling the water could go under the resiliency root break, you know?
That sounds familiar.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, water, yeah. It's everywhere. Yeah. And I'm glad you brought up the lie testing, so that has been scheduled for next Tuesday. The village did detect elevated lead levels under the site of the old water tank and so that's why that's fenced off. There's a lot more information on the village website, if you want to look at it. And we've been working as fast as we can to get that properly tested so we know the extent of the area and severity. So we have a date for that now, which is next Tuesday, so. Another thing I just want to add, yeah, it snowed last night, on the first night I went to Ordinance. It is time to keep your cars off the streets between 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. Tickets do get written for that and those tickets are 45 bucks, but your municipal permit is only 25 bucks. And that lets you park in any of the four municipal lots, the Masonic Hall behind Tidley Wine Experience, Village Hall right here, and our new West Municipal Lot, which has 32 spaces, which are almost always empty, so it's a bit more of a block, but really easy exercise. So it's a bit more of a walk, but a real easy exercise, so.
Where is that?
Across here in Saint, what used to be this Catholic church.
Oh, Cecilia's, that's a useful idea?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And the CHIPS paving projects, so I thought of the snow because we lost the day here, but they are still having to go through the development and places where people's yards were disturbed from the paving and whatnot, that all gets topsoil and grass seed and restoration work. So they're very much at the end of that project, but there are still a couple loose ends that if the weather's a little better in the next few days, they could get to this week, so.
And that is actually state money?
Yeah.
That comes to the municipality every year, a certain amount of money. And Tivoli has that out of, of holding on to it until we get a good amount of money and can come, can, can do a larger project. And this year, we really got a lot out of that money.
So it's Consolidated Highway Improvement Program. And then there's some like winter emergency storm stuff. It totals for Tivoli, it's based on your road mileage, and we have apparently four miles of road. So we get an aggregate of about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year from the state. The only rule of CHIPS is it has to be an improvement that's got a usable life of ten years or more. So things like roads and sidewalks and that is good. So yeah, I think we made it about five years and that's what's paying for this, the North Road, work on Pine Street, all the work in the development that we've been doing the last six weeks.
And this relates to the flooding too. For example, the section of it that we repaired out of North Road, we discovered in the process that one of the stormwater receptacles was too high and that was the reason the water was flooding off of where they were. So we got a good bang for the...
Yeah, I was trying to tell them all about it. But you know, time on, one of the areas they proposed that, you know, we spend, I can't remember, seven thousand dollars to study was that area of that work. We were able to clear that up. So there's like one part of the study, you don't even do that because those collect, that squashing system's working over there now. Apparently, it's working on Spring Street too, pretty well.
Amazing.
That's great. Anything else from the public?
Yes, can I close? So go ahead.
Thank you. How do we make it so people like me can vote in local election?
So that people are what?
People like me can vote in the local election. I'm not a citizen, but I'm Tivoli resident. And I, upon some preliminary research, I've discovered that there's fifteen municipalities in the United States that allow non-citizens to vote in local elections.
Okay.
Are any of those in New York?
Yes, one of those in New York City, a couple of them, maybe a couple more in New York State. This is, this doesn't go too much in depth. There's two state constitutions, a portion of the A C S Arizona and North Dakota, that specify, that specify that non-citizens may not vote in state in local elections, but no other states have specified that, because that is not actually written in law and when we talk about federal elections. So I'd be very interested in that.
Yeah, I don't know the answer, but I will sort of research that and look into it. Pretty much everything, like all the rules that we operate by are created by New York State. New York State creates what a village is. So you know, that's why I was asking if there were precedents in New York State, but...
It sounds like municipalities can decide, which is pretty hopeful because there's a lot of, I don't know how to describe this kind of, Derek Trump's card is, there's a lot of difficulties within the USCIS, which I'm sure we've heard about, which postponed a lot of processes for people to begin and sort of refugee status or immigration status of another kind, completely regardless of the status of the application. So there's these like, very, very difficult to get genius green cards and colloquial language green cards, which are E V one green cards, which are given to people who have gotten multiple wards and, you know, all of these different things. Those people are waiting for, we're supposed to wait for a year and are waiting for five years, which means after that, they have to wait for another five years to even start applying for citizenship, which means for the duration of their possibly, you know, a half of their adult life, they're going to not be able to express their opinions like that. So I feel like it'd be an interesting thing to discover. I'm sure I'm not the only one in town who thinks of that.
We will, we will try and educate ourselves to answer your question.
For sure, yeah, I'll wish you the same.
Dan, did you have something else?
Yes, I just wanted to note that the midterm elections set a precedent for a Tivoli mayor becoming congressman, which in that case, whatever, but you know, there is a precedent now. And I would encourage further development along those lines.
I question its situation.
We have a Republican congressperson now in this newly redrawn district?
No.
We have Ryan?
We have Ryan.
We have Ryan, yes.
We're in the eighteenth district.
We have Ryan because he's eighteen now.
Okay.
And Molinaro. Ryan was in the nineteenth. That was a special election. I'm August twenty-third and Molinaro was just one in that.
I was just prepared to move to the nineteenth district at some point.
Tivoli's over here.
What?
Tivoli's over here.
Yeah.
At some point, at some point.
Well, thanks, Jim. Take it under consideration. How's that for some politician language? Trustees, anything else?
No, sir.
I'm sure we all want to wish everyone in Tivoli and the wide area, if you celebrate Thanksgiving, we hope you have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Seven forty-one, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a great evening.